This meeting of the Oklahoma City Council for Orders is a special meeting. The date is Monday, June 18th, 2018. The time is 7:00 P.M. Kirk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Counselor Long, here. Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Hires?
Here.
Counselor Bliss?
Here.
You have the call.
Item number three is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the public concerning topics that are on the meeting's agenda. You'll be limited to three minutes of speaking time. We will give you 15 minutes altogether. Reference is going to be given to Oklahoma citizens and we, of course, will comply with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing no hands going up, let's move to item number four, which is discussion of possible action to grant a special exception of City Code Part 12, Chapter 6, in order to allow for a manufactured home to be located outside of an existing mobile home park near the southwest corner of the intersection of Garden Road and First Street, more particularly described in a job description that can be found in the meeting's agenda. Legal, Mr. Johnson. What did I say? My apologies, legal description. Thank you for correcting that. Thank you, Mary. Counselor, I think you need to press the button underneath there. No, I'm not used to this thing yet. Hold on. Okay, thank you. So, while that's booting up, I'll give you some background. We had the gentleman Tom McCollum approach us about the possibility of moving a mobile home onto his five acres. Here's the area of property that he owns. Let's see, it's at the dead end of First Street on the east side. Go back to where he's actually particularly looking to install, move. The double-wide mobile home is in the southwest corner of that property. As you can see right there to the west of my subject property square, there are two existing mobile homes on Sooner Drive. Obviously, I had to tell Mr. McCollum no, from your clear reading of our ordinance. It is prohibited. But, that being said, as I've warned you about decisions that you've made in the past, that we've allowed this twice now for different circumstances that the applicant had. And I'm unable to judge who has better circumstance, so it's before you now to make this decision. Practically speaking, it's next to existing mobile homes. And in fact, go back, there's a lot on the... I'll just point to it since our laser pointer doesn't work. This lot right here, it was existing mobile homes and it was an existing mobile home park. And Mr. McCollum has caused those to be revoked. So theoretically, there will be fewer mobile homes. He could move this mobile home onto that lot. And I would have balanced that judgment column whether it was existing determined on when the last time they had a mobile home park permit. But he doesn't want it there. He wants it at this location of his property, which is more secluded. And it's in an area that he can parcel off some of that property to his family member that's going to live in this mobile home. That's why he chose that location.
So just to clarify, he owns the mobile home.
Where there once was a mobile home.
Where one once didn't have a good... And then he wants to locate this just south of that.
That picture will give you a better vantage of it.
You know the description of the mobile home?
It's a brand-new double-wide.
It's almost in the county.
It's almost in the county.
And where's the county line?
That red line to the east of the property.
By the way, you're asking for an exception of like 100 feet or well.
Couple hundred.
Couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
So the easement will come in from Gardner? Garden?
First. The driveway will come off of First.
Come off of First.
Now, is that area to the east, is that all wooded? Is that all wooded?
Looks pretty wooded.
Those are trees, I guess, on the ground?
It is all wooded. Mr. McCollum is here with us tonight. Would you like to hear it come in or would you like to speak about this?
So if you go back to the first one, that's obviously, and I know that we're not to scale here, but that's obviously a smaller block. And it's not...
In what block?
That, the red square.
That's his five acres.
So that red square is where he wants to put the mobile home?
Correct.
So the access will come from First and he'll just put a private drive?
Correct, a driveway. Counselors, do you all have any other questions or would you like to hear from the petitioner or are you ready to make a motion? If you'd like to make any comments now, sir?
I do have some additional pictures that might, I don't know if he knows it any better, but there's some additional information here if you'd like to look at and just sort of pass around. The intent originally, this was my wife's property prior to us getting married, so the property will eventually all be leases, so it's my stepdaughter. But for the time being, all we're looking at is just a particular lot, a place a mobile home on. She had originally applied for an Indian home, but it's too far out because of some circumstances that's come up that we need to make adjustments real quick. So we're looking for approval to build a mobile home on. And if she spends the money to buy a double-wide mobile home, which that's what she's looking for, is the house is sort of impossible to do both. So, and I'm not looking to expand anything other than just one mobile home. It won't become a property.
Mr. McCollum, this photo here, is this your home, the two-story? Is this yours?
That's my home.
Okay, so they're going to be next door to you, right?
I'm actually about midway back. If you look on the picture, I'm like...
Okay, thank you.
My home is actually about midway back, right there where he's pointing.
Okay.
There is a small barn on the place also. And then I also have a 30 by 30 right there at my house. Of course, she's looking at putting. And part of the reason we're looking at the area that we're looking at is there's actually, and you can see the faint line of it, there's a stormwater drain across this property that comes out of the neighborhood. And it sort of runs to a catty corner across the property from that very top corner on the east side, or west side, rather. So we have to miss that. And also, the sewer that was put in, the property falls off pretty quickly and we're pretty limited on where we can actually hook up the sewer. Because even my house, they told me when they put the sewer system in, it was marking on that. It would hook up to it.
So there is existing utilities?
There is existing. As a matter of fact, right there behind those existing trailers, there's an easement that I gave to the city for a sewer line.
Is there an actual sewer line? Is the sewer line there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I mean, where are you supposed to park?
Yeah, I gave an easement so that the city wouldn't have to go through the rest of the neighbors' backyards. So, but it runs, it runs north and south along that west line and then up to First Street and runs almost back to my house. On the edge of the road there, on the sewer line.
Do you all have any other questions, Mr. McCollum? Any other comments, sir?
Nothing other than if this can't be approved, I would like to definitely look at the existing lot that had four mobile homes on that total when I purchased it. And the utilities are still there, as far as the sewer lines and water lines and...
All of them.
But it would, my feeling was, it would make less of an impact on the neighborhood putting it where we're looking at putting it than putting it right there on that corner of Garden First.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, is there anybody that noted an objection of you? Anyone see anyone want to speak to the issue?
Just an additional comment. Tom Adams actually lives on that corner there at First and Sooner. And I did speak to them and they didn't have any objection. And the trailer houses are actually rentals and a house next to it, I'm not 100% certain, but I'm pretty sure it's a rental also.
Counselors, what are your thoughts?
Clint, what was the city's recommendation? What was your recommendation?
What was that?
What was your recommendation?
I mean, I kind of agree with Tom. He's going to be allowed to have a mobile home. I think it would be better tucked away in his property than right on the corner of Garden First. I had to say no.
Sure.
Okay.
And it looks like next to this house in the south, is that a really big house that would be ground full or not? Or am I eyesight impaired?
It's just south. Lord, off the wider...
Go back to the big... Go back to the bigger screen. Like south of the...
Oh, south of the property?
It looks like there's a little circle to my view.
It's a boat ground pool.
A boat ground pool. A very big boat ground pool.
Yeah. There's quite a bit of distance between where they're stopping at.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually straight south of my house.
Okay, okay.
And that would be at the other end of the property.
And that, McCollum, refers to also own a five-acre block.
It's actually six and a half, but yes.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
When this is isolated in a week's interaction, would you like to take it, there is it?
Grant, do you have any suggestions or recommendations?
Just one additional comment. I'm sorry, but the house that you're referring to?
Yes.
There's actually a pretty sizable draw-hollow, whatever you want to call it, that runs all the way through there. That's where that water drainage comes off and actually runs in between my house and their house. So they're setting, they're setting up and I'm setting up and then there's a, that's the reason it's limited on where we can actually hook up the sewer.
Gotcha, gotcha. So you're saying there's a decreased probability that they're going to develop that there because of the...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, it's not going to be, it would be a...
Cost prohibitive to develop that.
Yeah. Lloyd, did you have anything you were going to tell the council?
There's not much to tell. Kind of summed it up. It's up to you all. Right now, that request would be outside of the law code, but you'll make a special exception if you'd like. I think in my tenure, we've done it twice. One for somebody with some financial issues and health issues at all at the same time and then once for somebody that had existing foot hips, phenomenal state, has a mobile home. So, we've done it before in policy, you know, in practice, but it's up to you if you think that it's convincing enough reason to make an exception.
One, I'm sorry, one additional comment.
Are you sure?
Just so you know, because I want you to know the whole truth and everything, but the same person that, or that mobile home that he's talking about just went in, was originally owned by the same person that that lot at the corner there was owned by. But then on both of them.
Counselors, it's in your order.
People tend to, you know, when you say mobile home, they've got a fixed picture of a mobile home in their mind. Being in the banking business in the past, I've seen these mobile homes where, you know, you really can't tell, they're really manufactured homes and stuff.
I'm sorry. Can you get one there to check it out? It's Joe Anderson.
And it may not be that even...
So it's...
It may not be that...
Modular or manufactured?
It's manufactured. And again, we looked at modular, but the reason being is the time or space that we're looking at, we're actually under a time pressure.
I don't think the code differentiates between if those do it, if you can do it.
Can we throw, we can throw our mobile home. Manufactured would be the only way that one would be allowed, even in an existing mobile home park.
Unless you came and asked for it, except...
Correct. But I would beg you guys to say no if somebody wanted to bring in a 1971 beast. Because 1972 isn't on, is considered manufactured, huh?
Sounds like the choices between the corner or on the... Talk about my student.
I don't know if that corner actually is allowable, but...
Seven years, I guess.
Yeah.
So how long would it take us to determine if it's even allowable for it to go back to the original location?
They clearly don't use...
Probably the application, right? I mean, it would be, would we want to say that they let it expire two years ago so now it's an existing mobile home park or...
In all honesty, it wouldn't be allowed back there, let's just say.
It'd be allowed back here for you and that's... It'd be another discussion.
I mean, I think we're making, I think the property owner owns both parts, and I think that they, this is a good spot, it's secluded, the natural neighbor will be the property owner. So I, in my opinion, I think this is the best of the two options if we're going to allow either. So I would make a motion to grant this special exception.
A motion from Counselor Hires? Do we have a second? Second, Counselor Jones? Any questions or comments? Make the motion in a second or give us a roll call.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all, appreciate it. And you've got your exception granted and you can move forward with what you need to move forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You should have proclaimed in your motion that this was the last amendment. We know better. We know way better than you. Item number five is discussion of possible actions under Doctor Ordinance Number 1259, 2018, rezoning property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Jamestown Drive and East Allen Road from single-family dwelling district R1 to two-family dwelling district R2. Clint? This is an item that we tabled from, I believe, May 28th. Wanted to gather more information. I haven't been involved with any conversations other than taking a drive-by trip and looking at it in person. This is the one that originally had a majority of the quorum, but not a majority of the council, and so we used procedural maneuver to go back and table for reconsideration and see.
Correct.
Counselor Bliss, I think you might not have been here with us. If you have any questions, everybody else is probably fairly familiar with the situation.
Yeah, I caught it. Thank you.
Worth, you're the advocate. You have anything else you want to throw into the middle of this?
Can I be talking with all of them about any opposition or anything?
No promises, no promises.
I may just leave, Worth, thank you all, but once again, I just left this, it's on item 19 this time, right? But these are old pictures. It's a tough situation from the standpoint that's on Jamestown Drive and Allen Road. Jamestown Drive, once again, has some very nice homes along the pit, but Allen and Road is a thoroughfare that joins the bypasses. I had much more detailed pictures before, but I just took pictures from the angle of the house. The second one is directly looking to the north. The second one is looking directly to the south and what it looks like from Allen Road. And then the other one is from Allen Road, looking back towards the southeast and showing that the neighbor there, because it's R1, has four entry points and exit points. The other thing's just been approved by the council. Less than, I think, less than a quarter mile down the road, it's an R3 development where the research place used to be, directly across the street. On this page right here, the house you're looking at, that house right there is 10 acres, is owned R2. There's R2 across the street, there's R2, well, there's R1, but there's, I don't know how you all classify that, since there... And I'm just asking, you know, I thought that it was going to be beneficial to tear this down and put up a nice duplex and have the neighborhood look good. If not, the neighborhood gets to have a single-family dwelling home that remains there. And so I'm asking that this be used on R2. Any questions?
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah, R2's directly across.
All right.
And then the subject area that you see on page four is directly to the east. It's a yellow, nice yellow house that has four living quarters, I believe, and is owned R1. And I was informed by Clint that it's considered grandfathered. So from a property owner's standpoint, just trying to make best use of it, there's some really things that have been done with duplexes in more that can make them look very nice. This varsity LLC is quite impressive in what they did. And we're actually looking to build something much like that that looks very, it doesn't look like duplex. Looks very nice, you all have seen.
Have you went in for that, Steve, the one that varsity did?
No, but Brady Grenfro, I've already talked to Brady Grenfro, just about being able to draw it. And he's excited too because he does a lot of building in town. This is, that particular type of duplexes and stuff is very familiar, especially in Norman and stuff, starting to get popular at Oklahoma State. I've got two daughters and basically asked them, and it strictly is kind of built, you have a four plan in the middle where you've got a living quarters and then you've got four roommates that are there. You stack two on top of each other, which gets you on the end of the rise. And once again, if you look like the varsity ones, you can, as a construction person, put a little bit more in them. They rent them out, including all utilities, somewhere usually between $450 to $550 per individual. The things that they like on that is everybody has their own showers and, you know, high tech facilities. So that's one of the big pluses. I've got all this for my daughters. But that's what we're looking at doing there, if y'all decide to do that.
So potentially there would be eight units, basically, if you did four stack?
No.
No, four total.
There's four rooms. There'd just be two units.
Oh, two, okay. So four. So you would have potentially four tenants, whereas right now they have...
No, you'd potentially have eight tenants.
Eight tenants, okay.
Because they stack on top of each other.
Okay.
Now, I believe the ones that...
I want to hear some clarification, because we keep them drifting back to something. It sounds like you'd need an R3 classification. We're talking two units?
Two floors.
Two floors.
Unit on the first floor and a unit on the...
Mobile four. Gotcha. Okay.
No, it's R2, right?
That would be R2.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that would be eight people in the unit next door, the yellow that's with the wonky division, that's got four people, four different doors, basically.
And we're going to have, like, three and a half doors.
Right, right.
Acars.
Acars.
Sorry.
Acars.
Counselors, do you have any other questions, Mr. Worth? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to the issue?
Well, it's Worth.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. If Mr. Worth would just build a little house there, we wouldn't have to have this. I do have some pictures and this is a little...
Are you picking up 16 people or not?
He just keeps showing one area. This is from south Jamestown, looking north, from actually Jamestown Drive. And that piece of property is actually a Jamestown Drive address. It's 1322 Jamestown Drive, not Allen Road. And that house he was talking about that's grandfathered in as R1, they tried to change that to R2 a few years ago and finally they gave up and just said, okay, let's grandfather this one in. I think that originally it was kind of some family, you know, family people lived there and they all wanted your own entrance, so it got grandfathered in as R1 and we were fine with that, so that no one could come in later. And they'll, it sounds like a duplex that's going to be on many doors instead of a traditional duplex that would have two duplexes, that you would have two or four cars, not eight. And then 16 times the boyfriends or girlfriends get here. I don't know if that lot could support that many vehicles parked there every day. Um, how does it, he was just like this? Okay. This is a house across the street. He keeps saying, showing you the R2, which if you go north on Allen Road, that is not Jamestown addition. We are south. The house in question is in Jamestown addition. This house is right next door to that house. This house is actually comparable because it's exactly across the street instead of being on the east side of Jamestown Drive, it's on the west side. This is a family-owned house. They bought it so their children have a place to live and go to NSU. A lot of our houses in our neighborhood are purchased by Autometry students, parents that are finding a place for their kids to live in so that they don't have to live in an apartment or whatever. So, you know, I just wanted you to see, this is the street from that house, too. You know, it's, there's another house, there's another beautiful house. You know, there's the street. So it's, I feel like we're being misrepresented. I went by on Fourth Street between Muskogee and the bypass where that will eventually be widened. I just wanted to show you this little fence. Some person has already put a fence up, which looks really nice. If you want to spread this around and spread this damn picture out, too. So there's a way to still make this part, so to keep this part of our neighborhood, part of our addition, and away from R2. If you start, you know, there's going to be a stop and, I think we talked about this, you were saying R2's from, you know, our street all the way up or from that house all the way towards Cedar. Well, at what point do you stop R2? Are you going to keep going until it's a football field and then, you know, east and west and about everything becomes R2 or R3 or C1? Since this is an official addition, that makes a difference. A fence makes a good difference. I was looking at Whispering Oaks, which has some fabulous homes in it. Their backyards back up to Fourth Street, what do they have? Privacy fences. So, you know, that is a solution. That little house is actually on Normal and Oklahoma, which I thought when they toured their original house out, okay, there's going to be another duplex. Instead, they built that little house. I've got pictures of other little houses in the neighboring neighborhood where it could have turned into duplexes on Jackson and Seton and Loser and Jackson. They built these nice little brick homes that fit into the neighborhood and actually improved the neighborhood. This is a brand-new house that was built in our neighborhood. You know, their house burned down, they could have sold it, you know, asked to put a manufactured home there or whatever, but instead they're improving the new neighborhood. We have had in the last, like, year and a half, three or four new families moved in that wanted to live in our neighborhood because it is a traditional addition. So, as we've talked about the domino effect before, you know, what happens if this house burns? Or this, no, God forbid, Lori. Now, there's that brand-new house. You know, then if somebody else wanted to put a multiplex, I wouldn't consider what he's talking about a duplex. I consider it a multiplex. Plus, we don't know what's going to happen with Allen Road yet, so why are we in a rush to change zoning when we could change the, wait for the infrastructure to change? Are you going to need easements from this area to widen it to a three lane to put the sidewalks, you know, which could affect his property values later? So do we have to be in a rush? Can it not stay R1? Mr. Worth knew it was R1 when he bought the property. He knew the condition of the home when he bought it. And I must say also, I want to clarify, I am not personally against anybody renting, whether a duplex apartment or a house, but this is a, an addition and, like I said, I've had renters across the street from me, it's been fine. That's not the issue. Please just keep this as R1. We can make it. Want to get into? Want to get into here, the council meeting that maybe would be an option for this particular lot or for the street in general. But I just ask again that you would take into consideration the citizens of Talapaw. Not one citizen, but several citizens of Talapaw. And I'm not, I'm speaking not just for myself, but other people and even other people in the community who are concerned about all these duplexes popping up everywhere without rhyme or reason. So please think of Jamestown Drive and Allen Road as Jamestown Drive and not Allen Road. Thanks for your time.
Counselor, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Clint. The red house that we're looking at now in the slideshow. It sits, I believe, this is the one that sits relatively close to Allen?
Same.
Yes, it's exactly the same.
Is this one we expand Allen? Is this one going to be torn down?
I can't answer that.
Nobody can answer that, so that's why I'm going to...
I can't answer that, no.
No?
Okay. Okay, okay.
Hopefully, we'll get the pictures.
Almost certainly. They're not going to like the result, but they're not going to be bought out and torn down.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just being brutally honest.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, another question for Clint or the mayor, whoever can answer it. If this is approved, will Mr. Worth have to build a fence to separate the R2 from the R1?
Seeing that's another thing. So that puts him in the, or that duplex in the neighborhood, and it just opens it up for others to come in and go, just like the manufactured homes or R3s elsewhere, R2s or C1s, whatever. You know, it's, it's to stay in a place.
It's a city, it's a city.
You know, and there's some really nice old neighborhoods in our city that we should keep housing, available houses for young couples to maybe, they'd rather rent a house than a duplex or live in an apartment. So these are just options. But I just wanted everybody to see what is really on that street. And I'll give you a personal tour if you just, if you don't make the decisions, I believe I'll walk the streets with you.
What are you, what are you considering the Jamestown neighborhood?
Jamestown neighborhood from Grand Avenue, then it would go east. So it's on, like, Jamestown Street?
Uh-huh.
I think...
I guess my question is, because if you come in off of Grand Avenue, you turn at Scholars End, so you turn at...
That is Jamestown, yes.
And you come down through, and then you have...
The split.
Some houses, then you have some single-family older homes that I would not necessarily put in the same category as the homes that you, that are shown on Jamestown.
Right.
They're just not...
That addition, the covenant, you had to have...
But then you can bring in Michael Torpleson's house, the one that burned down, that's new. I mean, that's even further, you know, that's not really there at the split of Jamestown.
But it is a Jamestown addition. Jamestown has lots and blocks.
Right.
It was developed, or created in 1947, and it was sectioned off into all these lots. And the thing about, I moved there, I think it was in '94, and I bought from the original owner. The neighborhood really was going down. But at the time, there were very few options to buy in Talapaw. I mean, there were just none of these new neighborhoods that we have now. And so we, you know, bought there. It kind of kept going down a little bit. And now, in the last probably five years, people are moving in, they're painting their houses. You know, sometimes if they just mow the yard, in any neighborhood, that helps. But I see a revival, especially for young families. We were considered the young ones on the block 20 years ago, and they referred us as the young kids. And I wasn't that young then, but I was. And now there truly are young kids. There's young children across the street from us. Of course, the Torplesons have a couple of kids, and all through the neighborhood now, there's young children. So Jamestown Edition actually is from Allen Road down to Jamestown Street. And then probably where the split is, I think it's a couple of houses still on Jamestown Street, past that split intersection. Arden is Jamestown Edition, Jackson, Kathy, Hugh, all of those were named after Mr. James's children. So that whole area, you know, is Jamestown Edition.
Trying to run my head around.
Yeah. And for just someone passing by real quickly on Allen Road, you would think Allen Road. But, you know, you also pass Allen Road, there's all those little white houses. They're not, you know, honestly, I didn't care for those when they came in. But they are single homes with families that are renting and have been living there. Some are kept nice, some aren't, just like in any neighborhood, whether it's a half a million dollar home or a $50,000 home. I do not live in one of these big fancy homes. I'll tell you that. I live on down the street, and mine is probably the least expensive, probably better than, well, I don't know. I don't know if it's necessarily better. Mine's just a little two-bedroom home. So it's, but I get to see all those pretty homes, which I enjoy seeing. I guess I was the one that bought the cheap house, you know, the inexpensive house on the nice street is what I bought. But it is really a nice quiet neighborhood for it to be so close to the university, football field downtown and all of that, which, you know, the, I'd be glad to give everybody a tour. We just don't understand why there's such a rush to do this. You know, why it has to be done now, why we can't wait till Allen Road and see what the results of that were going to be. Thank you.
Mr. Worth, another question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Worth, even though, Mr. Johnson, thank you, Rhonda, even though Mr. Johnson said you would not be required to build a fence, according to city ordinance, would you be willing to build a fence?
Sure.
It would clearly delineate the separation between the R1 and R2 in that area?
You know, what, I'm not trying to, it's an economic reason. I mean, what, I could build a house or something? The thing about it is if you build a single-family house, look at picture number four. If you don't build a single-family house, they won't buy up against that, okay? That is, that is just the facts. And what it takes, and she keeps saying, Mr. Worth can do this, Mr. Worth can do that. I did offer anybody to buy that property for what I paid for, and I'm taking the risk to go in and develop that. And, you know, once again, Mr. Hyer had a very good comment, but on the other end, said some apartment complex on the other end of Jamestown Road. You know, once again, I think...
No, there's no Jamestown Road.
Well, we're, we're, pulls in what she called the Jamestown Edition, excuse me. I'm not going to do that. But it's just an economic factor. That right there, I can't do. So if it goes R2, we demolish the house, we put something that's nice in there. Most of you all know the stuff that I've been in and owned, and it'll be on my quality and what I put into it. If you go R1, this is what's going to be there.
Counselor, do you have any other questions, Mr. Worth? We would await a, oh, Ms. Walker, I'm sorry.
I am Lori Walker, and I have lived on Jamestown Drive for 41 years. So I've been there probably longer than, and I could be, I'm only 41. I've been there longer than almost anyone else there. First little home my husband and I bought was over on Hugh Street, which is part of the Jamestown area. And my husband taught English at Northeastern, so he could walk still. We had one hall. And all three of my, our children, we brought home, two of them to Hugh Street. And we were on Jamestown Drive when John was born. But I want to address this not just from a point of view of what is across the street or from the point of view of what looks good or doesn't look good on that one lot. It's kind of a false equivalency about how it looks at this point. The point is changing the neighborhood from a single-family dwelling neighborhood and opening up the possible of these that in other areas in Jamestown addition that we can introduce dual-family dwellings. And I hate to lose the sanctity of the neighborhood, but I want to get back, I want to look at this from three points. I want to look at it from the point of view of a community member at large. How I was two years old when my parents moved here, so I consider myself not born, but by golly, I'm a Talapaw person. I often say that, you know, that all you have to do to make me mad is say something about Talapaw one of my kids, and I'm ready to fight. But as a community member, and what I'm asking you to do and what I'm hoping you will do, I want you to think about the number of neighborhoods that still have that single-family dwelling designation around the city proper. We all know that Northeastern State University is the crown jewel of our city. We've all seen, in the last 20 years, the revitalization of our downtown and the northern district and all the things that go on in the little park, Norris Park. One of my grandsons calls it Norman's Park, so I, I was probably a slip of that. But all of the activities that go on, we have very few true neighborhoods left in around the heart of Talapaw. And I look at Gillingslake, which I think next to the areas over in Delaware and Shawnee. It's one of the most beautiful streets in Talapaw. And that has been eroded with not only R2 but R3 designations. It hasn't ruined it, but it has taken the charm away. And I want to think about, I want you to think about Tulsa and think about Midtown. Think about around Peoria, Brookside and those areas. There was a time when those homes were in disrepair. Had Tulsa chosen to let that go, they would have lost, you know, one of the most beautiful areas in Tulsa to rental properties. But they fought for the sanctity of the neighborhood. And if you go back in there, some of those little cottage homes behind Old Utica, but also across the street, I think there's a York Street tiny little cottage homes. They go for $250,000 and $300,000. So I'm hoping that we, as a community, will begin to open our eyes and just have a larger vision for not only what we are historically, but where our potential is. The next approach, another view that I want to look at this from is from the viewpoint of a school board member. And as a school board member, two years ago, we did a demographic study. We had a demographic study done. So we could assess, of course, with all of the changes that are going on with the enlargement of Hastings and the discussion of 800 or more people, I mean, employees coming in. Also with the advent of the casino and the growth there. And I'm sure you all are all aware that through the Cherokee Nation and OSU Med School and Northeastern, not only do we have that Autometry School, which is just around the corner from this neighborhood that we are talking about, but we're, they're talking about a med school for Talapaw. So you know that's going to bring in more professors and more doctors and more professionals in town. And what I'm thinking of, you know, if we maintain the sanctities of some of these neighborhoods, some of these people who come in from other places where, we can't manufacture new land in Talapaw. You think that corner piece of property, because it has an old house on it right now, is, has no meaning. We can't get more land in the center of the city. So I think, if we think ahead, we can think in terms of people coming in and taking some of those little homes over on Jamestown Street. My brother, who retired as clerk of the federal court system in Tulsa, wanted to come home when he retired. He lives on Jamestown Street. There were neighborhoods all surrounding the community that he could have bought homes. And he came from a 3,600 square feet home. He bought a 1,500 square foot home over on Jamestown Street because it's within walking distance of the university in town and because of the feel of it. And so, and the charm of it. So I don't want us to lose sight of the jewels that we have in surrounding our city and these older neighborhoods. But from the point of view of the school board member, that they're talking about needing 300, it was like 385 to 500 more homes. We're going to be short of homes for people to come in and places for people to live. Now, if those people go out to the surrounding areas and buy homes and pay taxes or even to the new area over by Catfish Kitchen where, and some of the doctors probably will, where there's that new addition, that money goes to Brax. Now, many of these kids will go to outline schools, take through eighth, but where are they coming in high school? We shoulder that, and then many parents who work in the city want to bring their kids in, and we allow transfers. And we bear the brunt of that. I just think as far as ad valorem goes, and we know we don't get as much ad valorem tax for an apartment and for, as we do, single-family dwellings, or something like a duplex. The last thing I'd like to say, just as a 41-year member of, well, I guess when you count the other house, about 45-year member of the Jamestown neighborhood, I just hate to see it lost. And if one duplex goes in, I can see people coming in who have money and line up some of those other smaller homes. And before long, as Rhonda said, we have many dormitories all over Jamestown in that entire neighborhood. So it is my hope that you will seriously think about what this means, not only to the people who are living there now, but to the future, people who will buy there and make starter homes out of those little places and to our city and the beauty and charm that it holds. So I really appreciate that at least taking this into deep consideration would make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counselors?
Clint, just to clarify, Plating and Filing did recommend unanimously on page six to approve it?
Correct.
How big is that lot? Do you know?
I can probably tell you about it. I've got a flat on my...
Very large lot.
That's what's so unique about Jamestown Edition is they have nice sized lots. As these older homes do need updating or torn down and re-dug, you can fit a large home on the lot.
I just want to add one thing. I'm thinking with the Allen Road expansion, that should become a dead end. Big fence put up there and then your property will shoot up about $20,000.
Well, I know after the last council meeting, maybe a couple council meetings ago, that's something that we had talked about, is potentially putting, making that a dead end. Because I think one of the issues that some of the neighborhood... Because I think one of the issues that some of the neighborhood, the neighbors had to say is the site triangle, when you're trying to pull out of Jamestown Drive, pull out either onto Allen, either way, there's an issue, well, I guess not one way, if you're pulling out one way. There's an issue there. And so I know that we kind of talked about stopping that, putting a, turning that into a dead end road and putting a cul-de-sac. And I know that somebody asked the question of Mr. Worth, whether the driveways were going to come off onto Jamestown Drive or they were going to come off onto Allen Road. And of course, you know, the engineering and stuff isn't done there yet. There's no way. But I ask how big the lot is, because what...
It's 7,000 square feet, isn't it? And I can promise you it's bigger than 7,000 square feet.
To end up with eight parking spaces?
It's closer to two full lots.
So therefore you could put more than one duplex on, which then could potentially have even more traffic issues.
Sounds as if it's short of...
Well, I don't think you could put two duplexes on. I think you could only put one. But my issue would be parking, whether you could put enough parking on there for, which you probably could.
I know the one, if it's the largest one I'm thinking of, that just seems, it's such a big complex and it's just right on the street. It's a pretty complex, but it's too big for a lot. So, you know, we don't have a, it's not made with a straight line. It's like they can have the two-story duplex and look down on, you know, all the neighbors out there around them, which is always uncomfortable. But again, it's, we've got to have a stopping and starting point for these different zoning areas. And since that's already in an established zone area...
And they broke on this street.
I agree it's very dangerous, because I drive for Flidman Baker Edition and I drive, I turn that corner often, it is scary, trying to get a piece on Allen.
Well, I've driven up there probably five, six, seven times today. Somebody probably has my car plate and they've called and said, "Please." Especially with what you're talking about with the...
Yes, yes.
Because I've been looking at that and, you know, and I... I think I'm torn two ways. I mean, because I, which I guess is one way, I do hope.
With the definition of one.
And I think, but it makes sense, if you're looking at it from an Allen Road perspective and what is going with the Allen Road, division, I mean, it makes sense. You're adding to that and you're taking what could be kind of a blighted lot and you're going to put a structure on it. While it might not be a structure that everybody likes, you're putting development into it. And so you're putting a structure that will be nice, it will be brought up to date, it'll now have the curb and guttering and all of those type of things that come with the structure, the landscaping, that type of thing. And then I think you can, in going there, I think there is some area that you can preserve, some of the trees, and, you know, there can be a fence put up that will keep it from the neighborhood, especially if we then were to dead end that street.
What would have to happen for us to dead end that street?
It's a collated road, so there'd have to be some more maneuverings. I can't remember the exact approach and order and all that, but there'd be that friendly superstop and all those things again. You'd have to acquire some more property.
Right. And then as I told, I'll read after the last meeting, I think it then, it also makes sense, if you're looking at it from a future perspective, of widening that road and bringing it in there. I mean, it makes sense that you're kind of putting that all together in an Allen Road, you know, I don't know, row houses, if you will, or what, it all kind of fits. But then I understand the community as well. You know, I think what I would, you know, some of the, what I would say is, you know, one duplex on the outside of the community doesn't automatically mean duplexes on the inside of the community. I don't think it does. But, I thought that was Dana. For some reason, I just went back to like college and I was like, I don't think it does.
I would like to add something to that.
May I have you come to the microphone?
I'm just talking. I'm just hearing what's in my head. I'm talking out loud.
One of the things that I would like to be considered is, I live exactly two houses behind the house that Mr. Worth has purchased. And the dwelling next door, that you also was R1, the dark board apartments there, I guess, I've called the police quite a few times because of gatherings that they would have there. And that's, you know, that's one thing that I would like for you all to take into consideration too, because, you know, another dorm setting or apartment setting for college students, you know, in our established neighborhood, I just, I have safety issues there, safety concerns. I have a son who's a college student, but I have him under control in my house. So, you know, I would just like for you all to take that into consideration too, because that's a good thing for an established neighborhood.
Do we want to take any action, Counselors? Last call for action. Hearing your desire to take any action, we will take none and the orders will not be adopted. We will move on to item number six, which is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 1620-2018, rezoning a property located on Northwest Corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue from Single Family District R1, Multiple Family Dwelling District R3. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. This is a large 21-acre parcel at the northwest corner of the intersection of First and Mission. We discussed this at that same meeting, May 28th. The previous agenda item was tabled out and this one was tabled as well. I presented some alternate ways of addressing it through the PUD and some portions of the property, but I haven't had any further conversations with any Counselors about that.
Just forward to the petitioner again. Mr. Worth, do you want to say anything?
I don't think so.
Can you kind of walk through the PUD again?
So the PUD, I would consider the most strict zoning district because counsel's going to have a final say on the entire development. Before a building permit is issued, the developer will have to present a set of plans for their development that would have to get approved from counsel before they have a real permission. So it provides flexibility. They don't necessarily have to follow our area density requirements or setback distance, but whatever they have to, they have to make you happy with it. So if they do shrink it, you know, the idea is to allow the structures to be closer together, but provide like shared green space, that's one of the pillars of the PUD.
And it can be a mixed variety of use.
I would like to speak if you're going that. As the landowner, I don't want that. Either R2 or it'd be R1, we'll be sold like that.
Petition is for R2 or R3?
R2.
If he's asking for R2, so it just had to be submitted that way.
Play, I apologize.
Correct.
You're right. I apologize. I'm just looking to see if you can... Now, there was, after the last meeting, there was talk of having kind of a sidebar meeting about this development?
There's a meeting that will be held Wednesday between a resident and Counselors about the possibility of what I talked to Clint about, which was the portion that's at First Street and Mission being a park. Was with that, is there's been no civil engineering done and all the water flows out right here at First Street. And once again, I believe this is Parker, if I'm not mistaken, or the cooking park.
Is this one that...
And this right here, the topography, if we can take some of the water down there, I think will help a lot there. And then this is where the retention area would be and we talked about a park. When we talked about the park, the deal was, I said, I wanted to make it a decent sized park just for the community. And I think that went along with the city plan of the pocket neighborhood. But you've got Leon Daniel Heights, R2, you've got Traglers, you've got Commercial on Hillcrest side of it, you've got R1 down here with 1950s duplexes. And once again, lots of very nice, most of them built in 60s, 70s and 80s. And so I need, there's more adoption to be able to do that. I cannot, same thing as before, you cannot develop, from an economic standpoint, we put housing unless it's 1,100 square foot houses up against Leon Daniel Heights, doesn't work, guys. So that's where that's at. You have to have the ability to put some R2 in there. That's what I asked for.
You were reading for your drink. How about you're like reading for the microphone or something? No, no questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. How about I know somebody here who's got some comments or questions?
You do?
Okay.
So I just, just to be clear, my interest, or at least I believe our neighborhood interest is for this entire 21 acres to become a park. So as everybody tonight has set this up, now I'm just going to kind of share with you what I learned from a 10-year younger, which gave me hope for the generation coming up, young man the other night. And this is the theory of the donut effect, right? And so Bridges Out of Poverty kind of puts this in their book, and as I understand it, this can be applied really anywhere. The idea is that the center of the donut can either be a vortex that sucks the funding out of the city by way of additional safety measures and fire trucks and, right, civil personnel. Or it can be a glorious thing that adds to the value of the city and then kind of expands that donut out, right? And so everything surrounding that donut, hence the neighborhoods that you see around it, some of them teetering, but certainly just like Jamestown has expressed, we see these little developments where people are buying them up and fixing them, and they're cute little houses. And I want to speak to the 1,100 square foot home, okay? So Shelley Circle, which is just right up, if you follow Mission till it ends and you turn right, that all starts $250,000 homes, okay? So people will build and buy in these areas that are established until we start zoning everything R2 and R3. So again, I just ask you to consider the growth of this city and what it's going to look like in 20 years.
Love it.
And yes, we have a meeting and it's hopefully to negotiate the full funding of the park.
It will be...
And we are calling it a park.
Right. I told my guests, are we sure that we're there on that? Okay. Yeah, that'd be bad news.
My name is Edward Munson, and I'm most concerned with not only the whole thing, which I would love to be a part, because that property is east of my property. I had put this property on the west, well, a portion, not the whole thing. And we are preparing at this time to build a new single-family home on that property. Now, my original objection when we went before the planning and zoning was it was going to be R3. And I certainly objected to that because they could build almost up to the property line. And then I would have apartments looking down on where we're building our home. Now, the thing that I've come to know since then in talking with Mr. Johnson is that these new duplexes can be up to 30 feet high. So that leaves me in the same dilemma with those two-story duplexes as almost a park. So again, our objection is, my wife and I, they could still live down over us and if a fence were to be built, there's a maximum height on that which wouldn't cover that second story and we would have to build fence. So, you know, we're just looking at it from a aesthetic point regarding our property and what we're intending to do there.
Thank you, sir. Sir, come on up to the microphone and make a couple comments. I want to ask the Counselor, any final comments, please?
I'm Bill Rosar. I live 909 South State Avenue and I haven't lived there very long, but as I understand, in the years past, it used to flood down through there. And the city has come in and put in a cement ditch and it's been done for what's in that whole area right now. And what would happen if you changed that, then is it going to start flooding these houses on down below there? And who's going to pay for it if it does? That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Worth, very quickly. It's not because I don't think you can, it's just we're...
Quite frankly, I agree with the concept of where's the rush, because all we have here is a situation that doesn't have to, we would make sure that, they said something about flooding on Parker, I picked that up. Okay, what I would like the Counselor to consider is actually have a plan, have the people that get the appropriate permits for removing it, not like Ross sitting in back of the lumber or loads and then start burning stuff without city permits or approval. They may have acquired those, I have no idea. But I would like to have an organized approach where they come up and show you what they're going to do for disturbing the land, get a permit to that, so counsel is fully informed of the activity that these people are taking and it doesn't create a flood problem for the people who live on Parker.
So that's the plan. That would, I mean, to be fair, that would take place in the planning process. I mean, we would, we've seen it one day and that kind of thing, but that would, in theory, take place, so. Counselors, it's up to you all again. What is your pleasure?
Motion table, Billy, have his main...
A motion table is their second? Their second is a motion table? I'll second. I'll second to the motion table. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Harz? Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Dunn?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, sir. We will bring it back at some point after said meeting and we'll go from there. Item number seven is discussion and review of proposals for videography services for the city of Talalqua during the fiscal year 2018, 2019. There's your car and Mr. Murphy's name on it, but this was a result of the Mr. Bernard's contract coming to a theoretical end, as it does every year, and other people having special interest. It seemed logical to at least throw a line out on social media if nothing else, to see anyone, if one else was interested in doing any kind of videography service. And we ended up getting one more person with some type of interest. They nibbled, and so was Mr. Bernard, Mr. Scott and the third person, we have three. I can't remember their first.
Standing cloud multimedia.
Standing cloud multimedia. We have three options for you to look through and I think that they all offer different things. We didn't issue an RFP because we didn't necessarily have to, but we wanted to at least give you an idea about what was out there. Give you a chance to look it over and see if you wanted to do something bigger, better, different, more substantial, less substantial, and give you a few options.
Um, I did take the opportunity to read Jamie Murphy's job description and kind of look at what she already does for us. And we all know that Jamie, quote, hired her as a physician, very good reviews that are listed in the job description. And from my observation, it appears a lot of things that were in Mr. Scott's proposal are really what Jamie Murphy is already doing for us at the city. Um, and so, it's because of that analysis that I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and reapprove Mr. Bernard's contract and ask the city for approval.
We have a motion to reapprove Mr. Bernard's contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, from Counsel Mullis. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Counsel Hirsch.
So, how did we put out the RFP?
There wasn't. That's what I was saying.
So, we just kind of...
Back page.
Because I think that we have, and this doesn't have anything to do with Tom, Mr. Bernard's contract. But I think that the proposals that we got were two very different proposals. I mean, for very different scopes of work even.
Correct.
Be done. And so, I mean, I think that there is a legitimate...
Sorry, I can't read.
I mean, I think there's legitimate, something to legitimately look at in honoring this, in contracting with Bernard Media to continue what he's doing. But I think there's some legitimate, uh, work to look at in the Scott Media contract, to look at some of the things that he can offer and potentially get some of the things that the city are doing online and in perspective. And maybe if that is, just having him as a contract that maybe works with Jamie to go out and do some of the highlighted areas that he is talking about. Because I think that, one, is focused on meetings. And I think a lot of what Mr. Scott's contract is doing is focused on events and getting the word out about, and highlighting, you know, different departments, different programs, different opportunities, different, sort of things, for lack of a better word, things that are happening in Tallahassee. And so, I just think when you look at the two, I mean, it's such apples to oranges on what we're comparing. And I think that there's a good spot for both of them that are coming in. If any of that ramble really makes sense.
In the general sense, it's one of the reasons that we had kind of passed around is because we knew that we weren't covering other things and doing other things.
So, the thing even with Bernard Media, I mean, that, you know, the things that he's laid out, where I'm happy with the way that it has happened, you know, with the way that the council meetings. But I think there are potential to have other council, other meetings done, which I, um, and distributed. I like the recommendation of the city creating its own YouTube channel for archival purposes. Uh, you know, but then I also like the pieces, you know, going out and working with, uh, you know, the police department, going out and working with the fire department to share stories that they're doing, potentially looking at, you know, planning and zoning meetings and abatement board meetings and cemetery board and historic preservation and putting those online and doing some, um, you know, the stuff with some of our Tallahassee treasures to understand the history and, uh, and producing some, some video and some things to understand the history and, you know, how Tallahassee got to where we're at, you know, doing some things, highlighting some of our neighborhoods, those types of things. So, I guess I'm not...
Would you like us to whittle it a little bit and bring something back to you from Mr. Scott that would cover those things?
Potentially. I think in my head, where I'm headed is I think that we've got, we've been presented with two different tracks. And we're trying to combine them as one because that's how, that's the only contract that we've ever had. It's the only need that we've ever had. And so, we're trying to make them both fit in the same box. And I don't think that they're two things that fit in the same box. I think they're two very different scopes of work. And I think they can, both can offer us two very different, but yet essential services to the city. Something?
I just, I see a lot of what was in his proposal and Jamie's job description. And I see Jamie do that quite often on social media, for showing highlights of the police department and highlight the poor little precious dog we found, who we adopted. So, I mean, I personally see her actually doing those things for us already. And that was kind of my understanding when we had created the position and we were fortunate to find this Murphy with her experience in her board, that she has all those skills from her previous journalistic experience, which is why we selected her for that.
Correct. And I don't disagree with that. I mean, I don't think that anything that I'm saying has any bearing or saying that Jamie's not doing the job that we selected her to. But I think there, she's doing, I think there's a difference between, you know, making posts on Facebook and producing a video and producing some, um, you know, producing some monthly, uh, clips and things that are, you know, very good and helps get transparency and help get the story out on a good, on a, on a much better way. And I think it adds to what Jamie's doing. And I think Jamie, obviously, this position, the city, the job description, the public relations specialist, would be the person that oversaw that strategy and worked with the firm, whoever it would be, whether, you know, it's Mr. Scott or you expand Tom's, uh, Mr. Bernard's, um, you know, portfolio. I mean, I think definitely that public relations specialist, specialist would be the person to work with them to set out that messaging and set out, you know, making sure that, you know, 10 videos are produced a month or, you know, five videos are produced on city departments and, you know, two special interest videos. You know, I think that that all falls within her wheelhouse. Uh, but I don't think...
Should be a third-party service for the city.
The city has the, I don't think the city has the capability internally to produce what we could get from one of these.
It's a supplement, not a replacement.
Right. Does that make sense?
I think, in my opinion, then, I mean, because if this is what we base the quotes on, if you want to get quotes on those additional services, you would need to write an RFP for those specified services.
Correct.
And then get quotes on that supplemental service and not...
No.
Because the way this is written, it's saying...
No, you wouldn't. I mean, as long as we don't concede a $10,000 amendment. I could have signed one yesterday and I'd bug two. But, and if it goes over the $10,000 amendment you want to approve it, it's a professional service at this point. It doesn't need to be all that. But we're trying to give you the option. It doesn't have to be that way.
What did you say it was handled after?
Yes.
Um, how many proposals are you guys looking at?
Thirty.
Thirty? Okay.
And if you do want us to, to move forward, Counsel Hirsch, as, there's no action item tonight. Whoa, hold on. Counselor Hirsch, if you would like us to go forward on examination of this whole thing, I would ask that you be the one to begin those discussions and have those things, if for no other reason than have an existing relationship with, actually two of the three submissions, submitters.
There is no...
Yeah.
Just a discussion and review.
How did this one, we ended up there? Because I did one actionable in case you all wanted. You did? Okay.
I want to nail the council with things ahead.
Any other words to comment, Counsel? Actually, we, uh, I have a note. Did we?
Did Mr. Scott hear?
Uh, yes, Mr. Scott did. Yeah, Mr. Scott, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay. Tom, you get your option. Is, Tom, you want to?
No, go right ahead.
I motioned it in. But I didn't realize it didn't have to wait.
Well, basically, what's in here is, uh, if I could describe it in two words, it'd be transparency and education. So, like we were talking about, or he was talking about, you know, uh, having Tom continue to do the city council and the abatement board and, is that it? You do?
Right now, I only do the city council.
Yeah, okay. That'd be fine with me. That would open me up to working the fire department, getting something from them once a month. Tips, any concerns? Echo that with the police department, uh, TPWA and so on and so forth. Each council member would get their own monthly wrap-up show where you can discuss things that are either on the agenda or, or just concerned in your work, because you know your work better than anybody else. So, and, you know, I've looked around, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, other communities in Oklahoma, and nobody's got anything like this. Nobody. So, if Tallahassee motto is "The city a first", this would be a first. And I have no problem working with Jamie. And, and that's a good point, you know? Maybe she should kind of spearhead that. We work together on, on what's going on and, and work as a team. Same thing with Mr. Bernard, if he were to stay on doing that as well, you know? And I wouldn't have a problem donating my camera to the city council meeting. So, maybe we have a two-camera shoot. We do close-ups and we get all Hollywood and all that kind of stuff. So, that's, you know, and I've been doing this for 11 years. I'm IETV Channel 25 for four years, Red Dirt Nation for three and a half. Um, you won't be disappointed with my work. Because when I get on something, I get on it. And this would be the primary thing that I do with my time. I have a couple of side projects in the van. But, uh, this would be basically what I do most of my time and working with the city. And there's all kinds of ideas in here. So, these are sketches and, uh, there's always new ideas. You just gotta be open to them. Work as a team. That's really it.
You need to check the Stillwater, they've got something for you somewhere.
A little bit, but not to this scope.
Very educational.
Very educational. Oh, and, uh, I do have the permission of, uh, the OSU Extension Office. I do, uh, thanks for bringing up OSU, by the way, I'm Stillwater, so to speak. Uh, I do an educational program with them. They've said that they would be willing to give that footage to the city to play on Channel 27, because it's educational. I'm working on a deal with Beth Harrington right now, a five-part historic thing. Uh, we can give that to the city, put that on Channel 27. I want to review to show that. I used to do called Retro Americana. It's, uh, pop culture with an educational twist because you learn something about it. So, I would be willing to give that to the city to put on the channel. And I've got friends at, uh, Rogers State University and that work at OTA that maybe we can get some educational programs to also put on Channel 27. Because I think Channel 27 is a missed opportunity right now. It could be something a little bit more. And that would be part of all of this. So, I think for what I'm asking, the city would be getting a real deal. Because I would work it like it's the only thing I'm doing. So...
Mr. Scott, just to clarify, are only subscribers of Tallahassee cable have access to Channel 27? Or is that also with Dish and Direct TV?
I believe that is can, yeah.
I know, because I'm my son's side, so we only watch live content. So, I don't know about other channels.
Yeah, uh, it's just Tallahassee cable from what I know. I, yeah, I think that's all it is. Uh, but, you know, we have pretty spooked and Twitter and all that stuff.
Television can stream that onto television, or now onto the stream on television. You can stream that through the website. You know, I read ProCast, if you said or something like that. Channel 27 can be played on the website. I mean, it can be integrated.
Integrated is the right word. Right. So, you know, I, I did Channel 25 on IETV for four years. So, I'm familiar with this town and from here. And, uh, I've put programming together before. So, I've experienced it. And so, you wouldn't be breaking into a rookie or anything.
Do we have any idea how many people are currently purchasers of Tallahassee cable?
You'd have to ask Tallahassee cable.
All just high?
Well, what is your relationships with the mayor?
Uh, known him. Went to high school with him. I'm doing some video work for him.
For his campaign?
For his campaign, yeah. Separate thing.
I understand.
I'm a videographer. That's what I do. So, uh...
Shoot pictures, huh?
Shoot pictures, yep. Counselors, any other questions? Mr. Scott? I'm a Trek fan. It always sounds like I'm talking to anyone. It's like, Mr. Scott? I called you out one time while I'm doing it, Star Trek line. Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Scott. I've looked at here this evening, there's a submitter. Is that you?
Yes.
Come on up and tell us a little bit about what you've put in your proposal.
Sure. My name's Jen Thompson from Oregon. Um, longtime resident of Tallahassee, born here. And I, um, small areas that are, same, um, thing. I worked with a couple of nonprofits that produce, this last year I produced a couple of videos for KDA. It's a, a organization that helps to provide funding. And so, it's educational. I was with Sherk Nation for 10 years. I helped establish their region channel at Grand City. Um, my first gig was shooting counseling for a year. I was at the convention meetings. I also did some music resources for them. And covered the different departments and do exactly what Mr. Scott was just saying, educational, uh, videos for each department to let Sherk Nation know what their departments are doing, their services that they offer, and just put a human face. So, this is, so that when they're caught, when the citizens block in, they would know who you were interacting with. And so, usually it was a director head or whatever. I also did a monthly segment with the chief where he would just kind of like give a nation, like what's going on, like what are the hot topics? And he would address them at that point. So, I don't know if, so it sounds like he was saying the council members or, or the mayor himself would want to share that with the community. Um, I kind of agree with Mr. Scott. There's a lot that can be done. And, um, I kind of agree with all the segments that he was talking about. The city is, is an untapped resource. And I think there's a lot that can be done there. And to definitely think outside the box for just, more than just the meeting, but really letting talk on the, um, what the city is doing. And so, citizen can get involved and know where to go and what's going on. And, and so, yeah, so whatever happens here is definitely something that's needed with our city. So, I'm a one-woman job. I, I edit, I produce. I've done all, all of it. My name and everything, sound and stuff. So, I've got all my equipment. And, um, like I said, I've done it for 10 years with Sherk Nation. I retired, or I resigned a year ago because I wanted to go into business for myself. Because I'm a single mom. And so, it worked out easier for me with my scheduling. So, um, yeah, I hope you guys look into further videoing, please.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm glad I retired.
Okay. Well, then, National Block, we heard Mr. Bernard.
I'd just like to say, what I submitted was just about meetings. I, I don't want to join the city's PR team. Um, but if you'd like me to continue, uh, doing the meetings, this, the meetings and whatever other meetings you'd like. I try to keep it simple for budgeting. There's a lot of different ways to charge for, for media services. I'm not going to charge for any behind-the-scenes processing, uploading, all that. My charges are only for the time I'm here, present, and it makes it easier to calculate. Uh, Mr. Scott does have some great ideas. Uh, hope you find some way to take advantage of them. Um, I just feel like he's bidding more for Jamie's job than mine. But, uh, do you have any questions on my offer?
I'd just like to say I like the one camera and not the two camera. I can sit back and be out of the camera.
I don't know how...
Have you figured out a way back and not be seen?
Except for the, the tip of my glove.
I don't know. I don't know how all of you got, got jumbled up with entertainment.
Are we entertaining? What? Sometimes.
We're like a comedy.
It's a service. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. National Block, Counselors, any other comments? And we'll move forward to item number eight, which is discussion and possible options to approve Resolution Number 61818, adopting the fiscal year 2018, 2019 Tallahassee budget. Ms. Curtis?
Ms. Curtis?
Be all right.
Well, I want to run away too, here.
Stephen will have to return shortly here. You get a system mode, and everybody that wants to leave the room can flee the room.
Can I just please, Stephen, please?
Uh, I tell you what, let's just take a motion for a recess. I think it would reduce for a five minute recess. Okay, a motion for a five-minute recess, and second, Council Long, quick call roll. Maybe yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're recess for five minutes. I mean, just kind of happen, okay.
Motion to come out of recess.
I thought we were just going to die. Let's say you do that.
Bliss, please.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Oh, we've read the item earlier, and Ms. Curtis, you are up, and I'm sure that you've got a little explanation for your sheet in front of us, but otherwise, we're ready to go.
I do, there are, let's go to page 13. There were some mathematical errors in other services, capital outlay and personal services, they were pobled, very small amount. When I made those revisions, there were some other revisions necessary, because it changed the bottom-line total. So there was some revisions on page 12. And 17.
What changed on page 17?
That is our managerial, and it was the fund transfers that changed. Transferred cops and schools in particular, it was 228775. So it actually lowered.
You said 228775?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe not sub totaled 414850, and the total department budget, 3122769. The actual total for managerial or managerial with all of the departments included is 12 The subtotal on fund transfers changed to 414850 with the adjustment to cops and schools.
I'm sorry, I lost you. Can you go back to the new $12 million figure? You said 12-
And the subtotal on fund transfers was 414850.
That was just for managerial, right? And that, we need to add, add the law enforcement to that?
No, that's cops and schools included in that.
What, for managerial, right? Okay, yeah, I'm on, back on 13. So we'll plug that 414850 in to managerial, fund transfers on page 13. And then add that 1995 to that to be the total of the budget?
Yes, you're right. So that'll be an addition of 1995.
Say that again, councilor. Sorry, you're saying that's going to, the change on page 17 is now going to make page 13 change again, if the OTC says?
Page 12 will change by $1,995. On page 12, the subtotal would be 416845.
What do you have to say? You're writing that on Tuesday?
Yes. It's not a test.
Which would make the total expenditures 11 line on page 12, 11841822.
Eleven what? One more time? 正确.
It will not, however, change your resolution page.
It will not, sir?
No, sir.
In this book?
On page 7. And you have a revision from earlier?
The same one that I gave us tonight?
Yes. We will not follow the same format next year, if I'm still here, though there will be some adjustments made. As far as automatic calculation of the Microsoft document.
You're going to go when you enter your formula, so when you change something, it's going to change fluidly throughout the document, instead of having to go in individually and plug each date which is created, so.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't even need to be that difficult. I mean, because we have a Casell system that we purchased, which is, I think, the kind of the issue that we're having, is we're running out of Casell, and then we're putting it into an Excel, Casell?
Yeah, it's hard, because it's Casell and Excel.
We're taking out a Casell and putting it into an Excel spreadsheet, which is how we're used to seeing, and so I think in the ease of putting it in, that we're used to seeing, which is what Excel spreadsheets are.
You all are not even actually accustomed to seeing it in the Excel spreadsheet format. You're accustomed to seeing it then put in from an Excel spreadsheet into a Microsoft Word document. That's, I mean, to do what has been done in the past, it's actually from Casell to Excel, from Excel to Microsoft.
To work, which is where the issue is happening, so.
If you change it in one place, it doesn't change it in others.
That's why I tried to kind of throw in the commendation, basically, to Ms. Curtis about almost reconstructing it from the ground up, because those formulas were non-existent or not necessarily history each other, and it wouldn't propagate. It was a real mess.
And we did great formula with on the Excel spreadsheet afterlife. I mean, it's pretty, pretty solid. We've had a few issues that Council Long has helped us find, but for the most part, that was, that was very usable.
But I think now that we have you in place, and now you've been through the resume process, we have Casell, that we now have fully up and running, we've purchased all of the software and everything, I think next year we can see a different format, but it will be a format like we're seeing in the monthly financials, which are financial, I'm going to wind up a higher pitch when I say financials, but I think that that is something that we've seen, which is we're seeing in the monthly financials, which are typical normal financials, I would say, that you're probably, a city, a municipality is looking, is used to seeing.
I can say this, we just approved the gas storage budget today, and I'm about 99% certain it is a Casell problem, because it's just a lot, I think, easier to read, probably than you would.
That would be wonderful. I'll have to work with them to help them, for them to develop something for us.
Really, it is pretty amazing, because, I mean, it's only its second time through, year very first, we hit them shells first, a couple of apartment heads really first, time through the whole process. And it took me two or three weeks to, you know, remember that and go, oh, wait, 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 and, you know, try to help through something. It was a monumental task, a lot first time.
So we already just disregard the resolutions in the book and go with the one we're handing this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that resolution will match the weekly document that you were sent today via email, or I could certainly reach out and talk to you. Or, I'm sorry, Council Bliss?
That's all right.
Okay.
Call me SOB, you love. I'll answer to it. You wouldn't be the only person that would do it.
I won't do it. I miss my-
I don't take offense. But thank you. So question for administration, should we budget more for fuels? I noticed we used the same figures as last year, and I'm concerned that, you know, we're four cents away from that mark as it is today.
We can do that, if you want.
The only department that I saw reflection in was the fire department, they stay up there just a little bit, but, you know, we budgeted two and a quarter last year, and it's getting very higher than the price now.
Yeah, it's actually higher, and the public will look, they've never heard that either a lot, but we don't pay taxes, and so that keeps us below, and it fluctuates, and we've given it more padding than that in the past, but we left some of those figures alone, whether it was revenue or fuel or a couple of other things that I can't remember, some utilities, things pretty steady. But if we want to knock it up by a nickel a gallon, we can redo the calculation. Again, I make the suggestion that we do the math and bring it back as an amendment on the second, but yeah, it'd be easy to do, it's pretty straightforward with the deck, I imagine, right?
You think a nickel would do that?
I'm a little, whatever you think needs to be.
Well, I'm open to whatever, but I think, I think, as it stands, two and a quarter, I mean, that's, it's a little close to my comfort. And I know last year I said that as well, but, you know, we had a little bit of wiggling last year, and there's less such issue, and I don't want to get a situation that's been in the past where all of a sudden gas gets through a gallon, and we're surrounding some fool money from here and there just to, just to have a fuel back card, so.
There was one year, about 12 years ago, where the thing got real bad, but I shouldn't say real bad, but very, very tight, and the police department actually was the one that had the big fleet problem, and they were able to pull it together, and they even had a big cushion that year, but it was just an odd, odd year. And so, I mean, I have no rejection to more cushion. The only thing that I would say is that it would change the resolution, and so we'd probably want to bring that back as an amendment on the second, and just give us an amount and we'll do the math.
Can I just make a statement? I did a quick analysis today before the meeting, I kind of looked through each of the accounts and looked at the different operating reserves, contingency reserves, equipment reserves, some of the different categories we had, and I just came to quick math, you know, 1.2 million in reserves in the budget as presented, so. That seemed like significant wiggling in which to see gasoline or just expenditures.
Yeah, and I think there's also room to work with the budget in six months if gasoline is going up and there's being, to look at even sales tax and where our sales tax grows, because I think hopefully over the next six months, our sales tax will grow, and hopefully revenue will be coming in ahead. I'm optimistic.
One of the questions I had to you was, do we have any safeguards in place so this next fiscal year, if we're moving funds from department to another department, will we make sure to get that before the council?
It's fund to fund.
Right, right. As it's written at the bottom of the ordinance.
Yes, and it's fund to fund, we will bring you a budget amendment.
And so we have a plan in place to safeguard that this next fiscal year compared to this fiscal year?
Yes.
Are there any more motions?
I'm waiting on, yeah, the math to be done, motions to be made, we're rolling.
Do I need to have the bottom figure? Do I need to say the figure of the motion?
I think you should adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, number 061818, FY 2018, 19, Talaquas City Budget. I'm moving for a motion.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Any final questions, comments, from the remaining, like, two members of the Senate?
Council Long?
No.
Council Bliss?
No.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number nine. In junior, is there a vote?
Second.
But my fault.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.